It's eight thirty on. It's eight thirty on Wednesday. January nineteenth and first.
Let's put it just to the power of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will have minutes.
I didn't see anything. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from December fifteenth, twenty twenty one.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Public input, public comments and discussion. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this. Item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on agenda. As an item in which action will be taken. Public commentary will be generally limited three minutes per person. Are there any public comments?
I have a public comment. Anybody on Zoom? Oh, the one public comment? Okay, then can I go forward?
You can go forward.
In last week's paper, there was a letter to the editor. And it said, no county maintenance on highway four hundred. This individual apparently did not look into anything about facts other than he. He stated George Washington stuff.
Yeah.
Maybe that's fact. I don't know. Anyway, he says. And state highway four hundred is finally clear of ice. No thanks to the county commissioners and the road crews of Bursch County. State highway four hundred in that area is.
Same state highway.
State highway, just as he says.
Yeah.
It's not maintained by the county. It's maintained by the state. He goes on to, you know, lack of maintenance. He blames the commissioners again. And he is so far off base. He's apparently. Not a very long term local person. And he doesn't know what he's talking about.
Well.
The road crew in our, in our county does a fantastic job at maintaining the road.
They go above and beyond. And it's my understanding that who's the gentleman that works for you and Emily?
Jerry.
He went out there and plowed the road for NDOT. But and my question, because I was, this was a concern, was did anybody contact him and ask him to contact? NDOT with his concerns about state road, state route four hundred?
So I googled his name, looked up, got a phone number, disconnected.
He doesn't? Yeah.
Okay.
We tried.
I got a phone call in from the wire. I'm a little disappointed that they didn't. I can't believe they. I published a letter that is so much factual.
Exactly.
And they printed it.
I might not have a call home. Yeah, that's very disappointing. It's really, it really, the letter doesn't even, it ain't worth dignified as far as I'm concerned. But, you know, and also I, I don't want to disparage it. But yes, ironically enough, whenever we pass through that way, which we do on our way to water roads, we plow that road. Plow up sand.
Yeah.
I'm not, probably not as diligently as we do our own roads, but we make sure it's as best we can come and go. For state partners as we do on all our state roads.
Yeah.
If I'm going down the valley, I put a plow down at, at Sturgis and I'm plowing the front of the road. It's plowed. That's just what it is. And so.
Well.
I think NDOT was, they're really struggling.
Yeah.
But there could get some lines for help and be very shorthand. The kid up there that I knew with is, I'm not sure, I don't think it's the same as Mr. Robbard. Last time I called him, he was still plowed. So and that's pretty much a.
Oh, yeah.
Position, you know, so they were struggling. They, we were all struggling. Heck, we haven't had snow like that in years. We're off our game a little bit. We have people say blah, blah, blah. Yeah. I think it did go a couple of days without getting plowed over Christmas. But other than that, no. And then I think one time Jerry went through with the blade and he probably didn't come back. So plowed one lane. You know, and then by the time we were, we were back out of there, the snow was.
Well. This really upset me because I know how our county maintains the roads and they do the best they can. And if he's gonna make accusations like this, then he needs to get his facts straight.
Exactly. Call the company department before you write a letter.
Yeah, right. Right.
Yeah.
I agree. So.
And we, and I double checked on that, Mr. Radley, Trevor Radley, that is, the secretary. Saying never received any complaints. We, we had many on Herschel Road for a number of reasons, mostly because of all the problems too. But nothing, nothing from that.
Thank you. Are there any more public comments? A review of the agenda items to determine if they do or do not impose direct. And significant economic burden on businesses or directly restrict the formation, operation, or expansion of a business.
I see nothing.
And I don't either. So I'll make a motion to that fact.
And I'll second.
It's seconded all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So carry. Item number four, classified departments, road department.
Morning. Good morning. So. I don't think we had any snow since we talked last. Maybe it was winding up, but. Oh, we have a blade out this way. Still, Gaven's still out there making progress headed towards Limbo Ranch. We finished Trinity Pass Road for. Which helps Seapunch get their hate of market, basically. And then, you know, you don't, you can't start late until the clouds out. So that's been around nine, ten AM. So Gaven's been hauling sand up to Fort Fort Meantime. So we got that about done. They've been through quite a bit during the snowstorms. And I might add, well, we're talking about that. We, we went and got more salt. We, we went through about half our pile, which is amazing. We haven't got through that sand like that in forever. So we went and got more sand, actually got our. Our CDL trainees and some driving time. We drove over, went to the salt flat. Anyway, so we haul, and then they haul sand to the yard. So they give them more. Help. We go for CDL test Monday.
To Monday?
Yeah, so it looks like the weather held. So that's good. Anyhow, and then out east here, Bill and Kevin, they were in Dixie Valley. Finished that. Unfortunately, we were parked out there and our blades got vandalized last Tuesday. Well, Rob, they, they, we just put batteries in, are one of the newer blades. Two batteries. They got the batteries, all the lights. And the horn, they stole the horn.
And Kevin.
So anyhow, between the two vehicles, it comes to about sixteen hundred bucks. So not enough to really put it.
To an per claim.
For insurance thing. So anyhow, we, we do have a report with the sheriff's office and stuff. But now, so now we're having to, what? Oh, waste a half hour today taking it to the nearest ranch. So they won't get robbed. So that's a problem. But that's what it is. Anyhow, so now they're, they're working through the Sioux Hills. Back towards this way and they'll be headed towards Vescovo Ranch. I'll be here next week. Other worker Jacob, he's been practicing for a CDOs, I was saying. I think they're ready. There's ready as anyone who's ever sent down there. So that's good. Him and Jake, him and Jason.
Jason.
Jason's had a CDO with just a class B. So he's gonna have a class A. That way you can haul equipment or whatever I need him to do if I need. Need somebody, which a lot of times I do. You know, if the other guys are out bleeding and whatever. Grass Valley area, Robert's up there. He's doing a pretty good job. Late. He's, I had him out Grass Valley Road. Of course, he could have kept going, but. All the inside roads around the subdivision. Herschel Road, Van Dees, they all need played. They all, they go to heck with all that snow, you know. And unfortunately, he's up there. He's, he's plowing the paved roads. By the time he gets to the, to the gravel roads, the snow's already melted. It's damaged. Ideally, you get it off them, but we just don't have enough help. So. They all, suffice to say, if anyone's complaining, tell them that we're, we're on our way. Doing the best we can with one man and one blade up there like everywhere else. Some reason I didn't write Jerry down, but anyhow, Jerry's made it clear to the county line going towards Jango. Which is a good thing. I don't think we got the whole thing done last year. So that's awesome. Now he's headed his way back to Emily. He'll probably get to Emily today. Callahan Road, Major Road. Off to Unionville, we'll be going. I guess it's really rough. So that's next. About coverage. So guys, me, I've been met with Bryce for the host deal. Contracts up for Holland or from transfer sites. Talked to him about Nevada cement. Been riding with the CDO guys. When I have time, went to the Lepsy meeting. Mixed up all that salt and sand helped haul solve, actually called some sand to road with Jason. So. Went up to Grass Valley a couple of times checking on roads and whatnot. Want to have a look at Herschel Road for myself. See what Robert's been up against. He's been stuck a couple of times. Yeah. We got asked to plow out Spalding yesterday and we had some grief up there. Broke a chain.
Oh.
Anyhow, we're going back a couple of days. Broke a chain, broke a window. The chain broke, broke his window. So.
Flew up and hit him.
Yeah. So we're gonna get his window fixed before we make him go back. And I've been working on budgets. That's. Pretty much the low report. More than that. Probably heard enough.
We have a. Approval for payment to the road department garage door and the amount of two thousand seven forty seven dollars eighty cents building fund. Yeah.
And, and, and I'm gonna do them one at a time.
Yeah.
So I would make a motion to approve them.
So, Rain, we have monies left in the building fund for the garage door at the road.
Yeah, we have a line item that's four thousand for emergency.
Right.
Five fisher authorization.
Right.
And when Dan asks me, that's what I told him. We need to get it on the agenda.
Okay.
Guys, same day or day.
So I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded all in favor?
Aye. Really appreciated. Thank you. You skipped that.
So that is the yes of the bill?
Yes, oh, yes.
There's approval to go out to bid for mag chloride.
And I would make that motion to approve that.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Also, there is the November twenty twenty one to November twenty twenty four agreement with Nevada cement.
And I would make that motion.
And I'll second.
We can move and second it all in favor? Landfill and recycling.
We have, too, we're working with Host. We have a. We could extend the con, the current contract with them. So we're working through that right now. We're probably hoping to do that. They asked for a pretty significant increase in costs. So Bryce is working through that right now. See what that leaves.
I have a question about this. We have. Two transfer sites or three transfer sites? And we have two roll offs of each site.
Yeah.
So how many? I've heard that Haas is bringing more than six containers in.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Grass Valley, they're, they have to, what they do is they change them out and, and store a couple in New York because they don't have. That many or don't have time to haul them at that time. So they'll bring, I think the guy brings six. On Wednesday, you'll make two trips, triples, and then a couple more on Saturdays when it, when it's busy.
Yeah, he's come through on Saturday the sun.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then some singles. So that, yeah. And then Emily's usually two a week. If I'd known you were gonna ask that, I would have had some, some solid figures for you because I just went through that to get a cost estimate. But. Alls I can say is they've been doing a good job with hecking that you guys know in the, the previous year, we had tons of complaints, Grass Valley overflowing and stuff. And apparently they have a guy that's doing a good job. Now he's on top of it. And they're hauling like they're supposed to. And that, and that's why there's so many. But yeah, it could absolutely be more than six a week. Just, just.
Ever been any thought about maybe the us just doing that, getting our own truck, hiring a person and? Because we have the three, they wouldn't necessarily have to be out doing that. You know, every day they can help out at the landfill, the recycling center. And I'm not sure what a truck costs, but it might, if they raise their, their rates, it might pay for itself in a couple of years.
When I first started, I was all gung ho on that, Carol, and. Just lost traction. I looked, looked into it. It's, it's gonna cost about. I think at the time, half a million to get, get in business, get a truck, all the bins and stuff. And then hire, getting somebody to do that job, hiring that truck driver, that person that's gonna go do that. I think it's a, it's a tall order. I.
Yeah, I, I didn't think it was that much. So.
Yeah, it, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. They, at the price that they're wanting, yeah, you could probably, I'm sure we could. I don't know if it pays enough. I'd have to do some research.
I just wanted to throw that out there. Because we're, we're gonna go into budgets and.
Yep. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, it's, so now we're budgeted ninety thousand and they wanna, they wanna, we're gonna burn through that. We're, we're gonna go over that. And then they want fifty percent more.
Okay, see, then.
Yeah.
You know.
Hundred and eighty thousand.
Wow.
So it, it might be time to really.
Yeah.
Look, look at that.
Yeah, that's, but like I said, do it. Trying to hire another truck driver and be in charge of a whole nother facet of. Job. I still know. It's a lot. But we're definitely to be looked at if you want.
If, if you wouldn't mind, because like I said, we're coming into budgets. Maybe it's time to, to look at that. What's more economical in the long run for the county?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Well, we're talking about those, both sites on my trip to Grass Valley stopped in Emily and it needed cleaned up and so did Grass Valley. And it needed cleaned up, and so did Grass Valley, and they, and they did that over this past weekend, did a nice job. Mirabelle did, Sam Pitcher, of course. And they always have, you know, whenever we ask. Especially the last, last six, eight months, they've done a really good job.
Forable to hire or advertise and hire vacant landfill operator position, you lost one again?
Yes, ma'am. King Kai, he said he loves the job, loves working with everyone, it's been really good, but. He's, he just wants to move.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and advertise and hire the vacant landfill operator position.
I moved in second, all in favor.
That's too bad.
Yeah, yeah, he was doing really good, he's. I've had a lot of compliments.
I've heard a lot of people say.
They really liked him up there. Yeah, and I didn't mention, Robert cleaned up the Grass Valley Transfer Site. One day last week, pushed up the bird, did the bird pile. Just got it cleaned up too, and encircled back that afternoon, someone dumped garbage in it. But we got a name and happened to be related to.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah, the lady I deal with, so she made a phone call and let me know this.
Small world. Buildings and grounds, update on facility maintenance and repairs. Good morning.
Since our last meeting, our guys have been spending quite a few, quite a few days over at the jail, doing some maintenance on. Various things over there, we tried looking at the gate and couldn't really. We don't know enough about mechanical gates or electrical gates to do maintenance on it, so I pulled a company that usually does it for us. They did it, then we had to replace some vents. In the jail, the cells and also replace some screws in the lights that keep disappearing. So, we'll be doing, just a regular maintenance round, we're doing lots of projects for all the different departments. Been busy, getting ready to get on for, we had the youth softball's gonna be starting up in a couple of weeks. So I've got restrooms ordered for fall field.
You're signing up for your softball?
Absolutely, keep all on my knees. We got stuff getting ready to go out there, so we're gonna start working on, get the restrooms ordered, they'll be out there. But we won't be opening up our building until weather permits. And one of the maintenance issues that we're dealing with over there is the hard water at the jail. It is just. It's, it's, it's just really destroying that building, I mean, where there was copper. Even just, even their appliances that they use there, it's hard waters, ruining your stuff as well. They've already have a software, but it's just, it's burning itself out. It's wasn't designed to go through the amount of water that to be pushed to that totally, on a regular basis then.
So where's the funding gonna come from for this?
Bid for the water softener.
I'll make that motion.
Second, all in favor. John and I were having a conversation, said earlier this week. About the propane bills for the Emily Community Center Senior Center. Have you seen those, Rain?
It was five hundred sub dollars this time.
Before that was one thirty-five.
Is, was the rate the same per gallon?
I, I don't actually see the bill, I just.
Oh, okay, cause I don't know if the rate.
I didn't even, yeah, I didn't even notice, I was shell shocked by the amount of the propane. And I'm not even sure who's even in using the building.
Well, I contacted Jamie, and she said that they, when it's not in use, they have it set down to fifty-five. She didn't know why it would have been so much, but without knowing the, the rate, how much, if the rate went up. And also what the gallon usage is, but they are having events there, I'm sure. You mentioned a spaghetti dinner that.
And, and who's, who do they notify when they're gonna use that building?
Jamie and her sister or whatever, they take care of, you know. That building somewhat like. Our community center person does, but you know, I, we don't have any list from them. And so that's, John says he remembers that, I don't remember.
There used to be where they would come in and let us know, you're in advance if the school is gonna use it for the preschool. Or commodities use it, pity goes out there, once or twice a month. And she's let us know when she's gonna be out there, they used to be pretty common for that to happen, it just hasn't happened in the last few years. It's kind of hard for me to. Have things for them, if I put things out there and I know nobody is out there, they're using it, then how do I know that I need to replace or any?
So do you want them to send you a schedule weekly?
Well, monthly would be good.
Okay, or weekly if, because things change. But that's what I need to know, and then I can tell them that, do they need to send it to anybody else or?
I would send it to the commissioners as well, so everybody's aware of what's going on out there.
All right, I can do that, cause they get in touch with me all the time, and that's because. I used to help out with the Emily Advisory Board and, and all of that, you know, and I don't know what I can inherit. They had, they had a luncheon there, which I saw on Facebook. After a Catholic mass, which was fine, but you know, she didn't even mention that when I asked her about events.
Well, when people, I think it's great that they're using. But it's kind of, it's apparent especially for budgeting, if they're going to use it. How to.
They used to also charge a fee that, not a very big one, it was just, you know, maybe twenty-five dollars or something. That they would then send to read, but I don't think that's happened in years either, so.
We need to go back to that, because we charge a fee here at this community center. And, and charging a fee would help with the.
Propane bill.
Propane bill. And they need to let John know so that if there's supplies needed out there, that, that. He has been out there.
Yeah, up until I start getting these stuff, I, one person I knew that was out there. That uses that on a consistent basis was the deputy. And he, he turns the thermostat up when he's in there, that turns it down when he leaves. So that was the only, that's, yeah.
And then you brought up something about them requesting the stove be fixed.
No, I asked him about the stove, and he said it works fine. A long time ago, they said, and this was years ago, and I, but I haven't heard any recent complaints. But I, I had just asked John, they didn't mention. It was a long time ago.
But it's a, you know, it's, it's a working stove, it's a, it's a commercial.
Commercial stove.
It's just not, it wasn't, it's not as big as their cleanest here, but it is there. Again, if they let me know, you know, if there's something out there, I go out there right away, or within a couple of days. Depending what's going on around here, to, to check things out, make sure everything's working, but I've never heard. Years, that's why I was trying to knock when I seen that.
And I'll find out what they're doing or not doing about the fee, cause I think they just stopped it for some reason.
I have a motion in a second for the softener.
I think that's.
As far as I know, I have been randomly stopping by the community center before I come into my office in the mornings, checking it to make sure everything's been clean. The only thing that I've noticed that's different is Myron's storage shelf that he used to have in there, he had shelves in there, he had his cleaning supplies. His supplies are no longer there.
Oh, senior center, I think you said.
Kids and staff, but there's stuff there, I would just request that they put their stuff in the pantry where it used to be, so Myron can keep his.
Cleaning materials cannot be stored in a pantry. Cause the contamination.
Well, at least give us half the shelves back, so he can have his own cleaning supplies there.
Ask, work with Giselle on that, so that Myron has. Room for his supplies and the center has room for their supplies. So it's been no issues. And thank you for following up on that. Anything else?
The fire extinguisher at Emily, its tag wasn't updated or whatever.
They're getting replaced next week.
Okay, so it's, it'll be resolved.
Senior Center.
I'm gonna do the salary resolution.
We have a salary resolution for Ray Minnis. From a seventeen-three to seventeen-seven. And that will make her salary equal to the other cooks' salary.
So when is that effective? It says three months, so is it January eleventh, or what date is this gonna be? The next payroll.
Is October eleventh, she was hired.
So.
That would be January.
January eleventh.
So that's what I'm asking, is what effective date? Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve the salary resolution effective January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. From seventeen-three to seventeen-seven.
It's been motioned seconded all in favor. Discussion of policy requiring unvaccinated employees and volunteers. Who work with the vulnerable populace to submit to weekly COVID testing. And wearing a mask and other precautionary measures at work.
Why is that on?
He put this on the senior center because.
I'll put it, I'll, I'll explain, I, I put it on here for discussion and, I guess, guidance. So, just a little bit of backstory, one of our employee's husband. Came down with COVID, tested positive, da, 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 da. And of course, a couple of days later, the employee tested positive. When the husband tested positive, we had every volunteer and employee in the building. Go do testing, everybody else came back negative. So, I mean, what do you do? My first thing was. And, and Bryce didn't like this, but my first thing was, if you are going to work in a facility with elderly people like that. COVID vaccine is required. That didn't go very far. So my next thing was, is if you work in a facility like that, you work with the seniors. You come down with COVID, you're tested positive, if you don't have a job, don't come back. And the reason I, I'm saying this, and, and the reason that I believe this is, you gotta think about the people you're working around. They don't. Of the five employees that are there full-time, one is vaccinated, the other four are not. So then we came up, this is between Bryce and I, and I talked to Jerry Allen about it since too. Is for the unvaccinated employees that are working around the seniors. Weekly testing, so they come to work on, on a Monday, they have to do, we have to do the test. In jail atmosphere, what they're doing over there is when an inmate comes in, they have to test them. So they have the rapid test that they do there. I asked Jerry how that process works, he said they do it in-house. I guess that's a simple thing now. And it costs twenty-four dollars each. We don't have that in our budget, so what do we do? Is there any money in a budget to do that kind of stuff, Rain?
There is no more COVID money.
In this, in this last instance, where both the husband and, and, and the wife, our employee tested positive. She was off last week, and she was, is off this week, she has a doctor's clearance to come back Monday. Did she, and, and I don't think this is the right answer, but did she? Expose other people before she found out she was positive? I don't know.
Well, the one thing about testing though is you can be negative, and then the next day you're positive. Or there's also false negatives and false positives. Are they, anyone working in the senior center, I know the volunteers were wearing masks. I went for lunch a week or so ago, and it was really great, but. Are they wearing masks then, all the time, the workers and the volunteers?
The, if they're in serving food, they're, they're wearing masks, other than that.
The cooks aren't.
Cooks, the, the cooks don't have a lot of contact with.
And, and you can't wear a mask.
So I would think that if your volunteers that have contact with the seniors. And even your bus drivers, and.
They have masks.
They wear masks, I think that's, I mean. I think that's the best we can do, really.
And my thing there is especially if they're not vaccinated.
Correct. The temperatures and stuff like that.
Yeah, we used to do that, everybody coming in, and when the COVID thing kind of relaxed and stuff. They don't do that.
What about your employees now?
Do you have your employees?
It's there for them to do, I don't know that they do. It's there for them to do. I don't know that they do that for employees. And maybe that's something we should do is make sure.
Well, I would put in.
To the temperature thing.
Temperature check and, and just if they're around the seniors.
For the employees and the volunteers. That's, I mean, that's a good idea. Yeah.
Yeah. So I think that's the best we can do. And, and if they're not feeling well, they shouldn't be at work.
They shouldn't be there. Okay, I, I will relay that information.
Persian County Fire Ambulance.
Yeah, I'm on. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Um, actually, I'm still on vacation. Richie is heading up our department right now. I have talked to him a little bit. Everything's going fine. We do as the, as the Love Lock Volunteer Fire Department do to have some concerns about the Grass Valley, I mean, not the Grass Valley, but the Rye Patch area where they're not being able to have people there to respond to calls. And I mean, we respond, respond no matter what up there, but I don't know if they, they're down on people out there or everybody's gone, but seem to be, you have the respond all the time.
Rodney, what to do? Rodney, Rodney, when, when was the, the last one and how many of those have we experienced?
I can't tell you how many it is, but I could go back and research that or, or the, or we can get that done. But the most recent one was yesterday or day before, we had a call out there for a fire and they did not respond.
They had no response. Fire was a go off yesterday. That's what that was for.
Yeah. So anyhow, I'm just concerned about, you know, we're gonna go, you want, you're, you want to spend a bunch of money on a firehouse out there for an addition. I think it's like two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And maybe we should be looking at getting the equipment down to the size of the amount of people that are out there, what they do need to use, because we respond to everything that happens out there anyhow with our group. And so do we really need a bigger firehouse or do we just need to have the equipment that they can, that they can run to, to the calls like one brush truck, their structured truck and a tank? Or I don't know. Do we need, do we need more equipment in a bigger firehouse?
I think we'll have that discussion in a chief's meeting.
I have a quick question regarding the Rye Patch Fire Department too. If we have no activity going out there, why is the county still paying per tonne? There is a, I think it's a suspension or some type of form that we can use with hers. If they're not active, we can deactivate those members and not pay hers on it.
Yeah.
It's, I was gonna bring this up in budgets when we start doing workshops next month or in two months, but that clearly, I think, I know this city did do that on some of theirs that were inactive. They pulled them out of hers and then when they reactivated, they put them back. There is a form that that can be done.
What is going on out there? Why are they not responding to calls?
I hear lots of excuses and mostly is it's somebody they're at work or they're just not available.
When, when they.
Go down to Arizona for the three or four months and they're not here at all.
Yeah. Rodney? I will find out why.
Well, the question, the thing is, is, you know, we, we're, we've been talking about a new ambulance that we, you know, that we have in a, you know, that we should be replacing. And, you know, we don't have the money for it and we want to hire a person to run the EMS part of it and that. And I think instead the ambulance being at the bottom of that, that list of the things that you're gonna do with that money, that we, maybe we should move that ambulance up and, and reassess that building. You know, if you put, if you add on to that, gonna have more maintenance and stuff too. If we add more equipment, you have more maintenance and, you know, how many people do you have there to, to run all that equipment? Maybe we need to get it down to where the, the equipment matches the map.
So Rodney, you bring up a really good point and that's something that we'll have to address.
Yeah. So anyhow, I just wanted to bring that up. I mean, actually, Love Lock's the only one that the county doesn't have. I, I mean, we basically are in with the city on the firehouse we have right now. And we keep our equipment down to what we can keep inside, you know, and, and the amount of people that we have to run it. And so I'm just kind of, I'm concerned about it, the way that money's gonna be shifted around there. And I don't know, I think we really need to look at that. And I think another thing we need to look at is the, is getting into the districts and that. So Mike keeps telling us that we have to, to qualify for a lot of these grants. We need to be upgrading into some of that stuff. I think Mike's on the, on right now too. Maybe he can give you a little information on, you know, we've talked and talked about it, but we, you know, we really need to do something about that. So we can apply for some of these grants and stuff. Any comment on that?
Mike?
Yeah, I'm here if you have any questions.
Does anybody have any?
Well, I, I have talked to the DA about this a number of times. I think it's something, something that we as a commission have to talk to him about again, because anyway, it's not for lack of inquiring or the, it's the pros and the cons of it. And I understand what you're saying, Mike and Rodney.
And we need to, for a lot of these grants, we have to come up with a business.
A business plan. And that's what we were going to establish was a group to do the business plan. And I don't know when that's gonna happen or how it's gonna happen, but Bryce isn't here to answer some of those questions. So.
Bryce has court this morning, so he's not here, but we do, for a lot of these grants, we need to come up with a business plan. And that was one thing that we were going to do was get a people together and try and figure out what that's gonna look like. So.
And then have it ready for next year's grant application process.
Does that answer your question, Rodney? Rodney?
Yeah.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, it did. My reception's a little bit sketchy, so I kind of, you guys kind of cut in and out, but I got the gist of it. So I think we're good.
Okay. That, do we have an ambulance report or anything? Is Marty on?
I'm not sure if Marty's on or not. We're still.
He's not on, so.
So I.
She's not on, so we don't have an ambulance report? Or do you have that?
You said.
I don't have any ambulance report, but the, but she is working on getting the licensing going. That's the big push right now is to get everybody licensed for next year. We've been, I know she's been really working hard with the state people to kind of straighten out. We have trouble with the fingerprinting and stuff.
Okay.
And I, and I think she's got that taken care of now and we're moving forward on that.
Okay. Any more questions for Rodney? Thank you, Rodney. Do we have Grass Valley Fire Department on?
I have a report from Sean. For, for the Grass Valley Fire Department, they held their elections. The new officers are, the chief is Sean Burke. The assistant chief, oh quit. The assistant chief, Zach Johnson, and then it goes down from there all the way to training, maintenance and medical. They currently have fifteen members, eighteen is, is their authorized number. So they have fifteen of eighteen. That's great. Training continues to proceed at, at the firehouse with the main emphasis on firefighter one qualification. They anticipate that they'll have twelve of the fifteen completed by the end of January, which is amazing. The remaining three are new and will take some additional time. After completing the firefighter one, they will shift focus to wildlife or wildland fire certifications. All firefighters will, will compete this prior to the summer. And they will hold an EMR class in March. The new brush truck is out to bid. He has been contacted by two companies. And he knows of two others that are working on the bid. So they have people working on the bid for that, which that bid opening is February sixteenth. Want me to do the other ones? Under emergency management, he says, we had a, a meeting last, a LPSI meeting last week, January twelfth. The annual CIRC paperwork has been submitted to the state. They will keep us eligible for future hazmat and security related grants. All grants remain on track. Maybe we should have Sean doing our grants. We'll, we'll start implementing originally approved by state E M P G grant to produce items for emergency operations facilities at the community center and the mobile trailer. Grass Valley Advisory Board, we have Paul here, so I won't go into that.
Right. We have advertising, hiring and set salary for EMS coordinator. Option. Well, let's start, stop there.
My opinion, we should be advertising, but in that process, you don't have to set salary. We, I mean, Karen has a salary range. We can go with that. The, I wrote down depending on qualification. We don't know who's gonna apply for that.
That's true.
If we have a, a paramedic apply for it, then.
Correct.
Yeah.
So do you want to just move forward with the?
Advertising.
Advertising.
I mean, that's up to you guys to.
EMS coordinator? And set.
Depending on qualifications.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So I'm gonna, sorry, I'll make a motion that we go forward with the advertising and hiring and we will set the salary depending on experience and qualifications of the individual.
And I'll second that.
Have a motion in second all in favor.
Aye.
So carry. Next is the option proposal of seventy-five dollars each stipend for Derby Field Airport Hospital transfer when there are two ambulance attendants or a hundred and fifty dollars for one ambulance attendant.
This was requested by Marty at our last meeting that if there were two individuals that responded to Derby Field Airport, that the hundred and fifty dollars be split. I don't really have a problem with that. As long as we don't go over a hundred and fifty. So if that's okay, and they have to indicate that when they submit the vouchers to ring, you know, if it's who it is, you know, and, and the date, you know, the transfer and all of that. So if it's okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion to accept this proposal.
I'll second that.
The motion second all in favor.
Aye.
So carry.
So I've got one quick question. This is Rod's. On, on the advertising for the MS coordinator, that's just gonna, where will that be advertised at?
It'll be on the website.
And the paper.
And, and the newspaper.
Okay, the Love Lock paper.
The what?
Also on the.
The Love Lock paper.
The Love Lock paper, the county's Facebook page and the county website. And NACO.
Is there, do you have any suggestion Rodney of where else it could be advertised?
No, I just wanted to know where it was gonna be at. I, I think that'll probably be fine, but it's on the website now. So I think that's good. So anybody that's wanting to apply, they just go to the website, fill out the application and then you, how about interview committee and that? When will you guys decide what you're gonna do with that?
We'll, we'll decide with that after we have applicants. Mike, do you have a question?
No, not really a question, just maybe a, a comment and potential suggestion. But I know when we're looking for firefighters, E M Ts and such throughout the rural areas, there's a thing called listserv with the state that the stadium S office has and the state fire marshal training division has. And those applications and job announcements get posted. They distribute those. That might help your pool a little bit.
Yeah.
So how would we get access to that? Could, could Karen send you the information and then you could have, get it posted there for us?
Actually, if you guys have Karen send me something, I will send you the contacts for those two lists.
Okay.
And that way she can, she can do it. And I won't be the middleman.
Okay, that'd be perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anything else on that? More comments on that? It's an approval of an interlocal contract between the public. Cause. The forces Nevada Division of Forestry in Persian County and operate fire protection program.
This is what saves us money when we have. Oil buyers, yes. Bryce, I would take his. But I just want, but if it's okay, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve this interlocal contract. And for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, it says, and twenty twenty-three, each year's a hundred and thirty-one thousand sixty-four dollars not to exceed for the two years, two thousand, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion second all in favor.
Aye.
So carry. The safety, community health nurse cemetery department update, anything?
Cheryl has clinic today and she didn't send me a report, but they've been doing a really good job. They did the, the res for the veterans and all of that. And Larry helped a great deal with that. Thank you very much. Cemeteries look good. Safety, we're up to date on everybody, getting the, the classes out to everybody that they have to do. And, and the, with regard to the health department for the state, the health nurse, Marcia Foreman has submitted her retirement effective, I think April first, but in April. And then what the state will do, we don't know. Right now they're so shorthanded and it's just, it's a mess. We do have some Zoom meetings coming up regarding a health district, you know, combining Churchill and a few other, and us and another one. I, you know, of course, we'll listen in on that. Cheryl will too. But I think as we learn more, that's probably the direction that we probably should go. But I don't have enough information to make that recommendation yet. But, you know, we have problems like out in Emily, for instance, with the mosquitoes all the time. Fallon Churchill has a vector program. You know, maybe they, they could help us with that issue invading. You know, it, it's just some, it's just things that always come up. So I'll, I'll know more as we go along, but our first meeting is coming up. So I'll know more as we go along, but our first meeting's coming up.
Did the emergency operations report?
Kinda, yeah.
Yeah, you did there. IT department.
I have a whole lot for you today, still been playing a lot of catch-up. AT&amp;T is starting to, or is in the process of starting to hold this for the fiber build-out. So I have, I actually have a schedule, a walkthrough scheduled for tomorrow. There, one of their technicians needs to come down and look at the four sites that we're gonna start, and so that he knows where they need to terminate, where their equipment will be able to live. So Cheryl, I'm gonna need access to the server deposit tomorrow, I don't know exactly when. More, more likely the front one. Possibly the back one, but I don't think we're gonna go that far back, so we can terminate up time. Yeah, starting to get all the budget numbers together and trying to get through all the service tickets that built up, and trying to get those problems like the phone issues that resolve.
Getting there, or?
I'm treading water. Not very well, but.
At least your heads above water.
Um, yeah, I did post, there were three advertisements that were sent to me to post, and I did get those posted, the IT position, warrant operator position, and museum clerk position.
Good.
Anything else before we move on?
Just, the only other thing on the mind was the salary resolutions. But unless you have questions for me otherwise.
You don't want me to, but.
No, never.
A salary resolution for Justin Abbott, the IT manager?
To make him a IT manager. Well-earned. Yes.
I didn't realize that you were considering a salary resolution update for Justin. I think we were going to see about an IT technician. I just want to remind you that I only have a hundred thousand dollars in IT budget. As IT tech person by the quick analysis of salary we did, it's gonna take over thirty-some thousand. We also have this rent on his building that is not budgeted. The phone and all that stuff has gone higher, that's not budgeted. So again, a hundred thousand is gonna go very far, because then I would also have to augment his wages if you do the salary resolution, as of now, instead of waiting until July first.
And if we, if we, if we need to wait to change my salary to July first, that's fine. My, my, my main concern is getting in another person and moving towards competitive salaries, or as close to competitive as we can be within the constraints of our budget.
Rain, do we have in our budgets to hide, to basically hold off on Justin's increase? And hire the technician?
I would have to augment the budget shape before the management. Because all that was done in his budget now is one person, just him, just an annual raise, not in six months and then another six months.
And how many, how many more budgets are we gonna have to augment?
I don't know that at this time, because a hundred thousand's gotta go through the whole general fund, which includes commission, Lacy's office, my office, Lori's office, Jane's office, buildings and grounds, the general.
I just did the numbers on the proposed increase for our IT manager, and from now to the end of the year, that's two thousand eighty-three dollars.
Yeah. We, we have departments that don't spend all their money either, as long as the general fund is okay all across the board.
Well, it all depends on which ones are grouped together and all, and you have like your legal ones.
Right.
D A and all of those, and then you have your fire departments and health.
And I know, I know, I have money in my small equipment, buy an item, that I was planning on spending on some equipment, but that equipment can be pushed down the road to.
After July first.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
I just, I will need, I will need some to outfit a new employee, but, I mean, that's.
How much is in that budget?
I don't have it with me. But I. Yes. The one I talked to, I didn't talk to you about the switches I was getting with.
So I have a suggestion. Why don't we go forward with the hiring of the IT technician? And then, once that person is hired, then at that time, raise Justin up to IT manager.
Rain was just looking up numbers. Ten thousand?
Ten thousand. Okay.
Yeah, so if I took like, if I set, hold on. So that I have money to outfit a new employee.
Can we do that the way that, can we do that the way this is ordered in a kitchen? Okay. Right, Karen had a suggestion that at this time, we could go forward with changing your title to IT manager effective right away, and then come July first, actually doing the salary increase for you at that point. Would that be okay?
That would be fine.
So I will make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
So Carrie. As, or the IT technician.
We have a range of thirty-five to forty thousand, depending on their experience. So I think once that individual's hired, then we can actually set their salary. That gives us.
Have anybody that you know may be interested in filling that?
Okay, good. Um, maybe good, I don't know.
I, there are a few that had asked me about it. And I did let them know that the job is posted. So I don't know whether the application, especially if he's one of them, or if they're applying, putting in an application.
Well, we can get the word out, go ahead and.
How are we, how are we gonna pay for this? That's what concerns me, is that we only have a hundred thousand dollars to augment budgets, and we have to probably augment budgets countywide. How do we pay for this?
Well, we're not looking at paying, just say thirty-five thousand plus benefits right now. By the time they're hired, we'll be more in to like half of the year. So it's not gonna take all of that. I don't think that we can wait too much longer to do this. Yeah, but, yeah.
And, um, the adver, that, for the application code is for thirty days from last Tuesday.
So what you need to do then is just watch your budget, and as much as possible, you know, not spend, and things that can wait, wait. But, I, you know, I, it's just like when we hired you, you know, several years ago, you weren't in the budget either, but Rain came and said, we can't live any longer without an IT person. That was the wisest decision made by everybody, because I can't even begin to imagine where we would be, we wouldn't be, so.
You just said some.
Oh, yeah. But anyway, I think that, I think we'll be fine.
Okay, do you have a motion?
What, to go ahead and set the salary somewhere between thirty-five and forty, depending on the individual and their experience, and we'll see who comes available, and if it's, if it's somebody that doesn't have a lot of experience, it might be less than that. You know, I don't know.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
So Carrie.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Public defender? Okay. Development, is Heidi on there?
Morning, I'm here.
Good morning, Heidi.
I really don't have much to report, other than, uh, West Coast Salmon, Nevada, their, their, their Norwegian counterpart, and the team will be here on Monday, so I've talked to you as commissioners already about that, and I think that's the biggest thing on my horizon right now.
Do you have any questions for Heidi? Okay, thank you, Heidi.
Thank you, have a good day.
You too. Lacy, do you have anything for us?
I do not have anything to report, I will have some corrections for you.
Rain, do you have anything while we're ready?
This is very brief, and I didn't get it on the agenda, but Karen and I have just briefly visited too, and I just am making a suggestion for an upcoming discussion in the board meeting. I think we need to get some protocols for the COVID that's going on, and steps of, so every department head is following the same guidelines. We have no guidelines, we don't know who and how many are using sick leave. We've been asked through payroll, is there still COVID sick time, which there is not? Nobody knows what anybody else is doing, everybody's going different ways. I just, for my department and us tracking, we need to have something formal, step one through ten, and everybody follows it the same way.
So can, having, can you and Karen come up with a recommendation?
We probably can, we just haven't had time yet. A lot of things that are happening is, as you know, after three days of sick leave, when you go into your fourth day, you're required to come back with a doctor's excuse, and at that time, you're also required to fill out F M L A paperwork. That's a federal law, not a county law, not a state law. We're not getting those F M L A papers, and you have to be employed with the county for one year to qualify for F M L A, and have worked twelve hundred and fifty hours. So a lot of our new employees don't qualify for that, but we have other employees that do. We're not getting any F M L A paperwork, and it's twelve weeks in a year from the start date. So if they used a couple weeks in October, and a couple weeks in January, then when you come to September, if you only have one day left, that's all you can take with F M L A. F M L A covers the employee, and it also protects the county, because after they've used their twelve weeks of F M L A, F M L A leave, the county isn't responsible to pay their medical premiums anymore, that's up to the employees. This kind of stuff is not getting done. I don't, I can't enforce it myself, I need guidance from the commissioners, and I really think we need a protocol of steps one through whatever, and if.
So if you and Karen can put that together, you know, and we can put it on the agenda.
We'll approve it, no.
Is there any funding for using that for reimbursement for E M L A? When you were out of COVID, it was. But I don't.
I don't think it's not anymore, not with the American recovery.
No, there's not.
No.
So the person, the employee has to use their personal sick time.
Or vacation, or. F M L A.
Yeah.
Fill out the other M L A papers.
But even have an F M L A, if you don't have hours in your sick leave, you're not, you're gonna have unpaid, even if you're in the F M L A.
It just protects your job.
It protects your job, and it keeps the county paying for your premium for that one year of time.
What we did on this one employee I talked about earlier, that tested positive, the first call was to Chris, how much sick leave does this employee have? So on her time card, she wasn't here to complete it. What sick leave she had was used, and the rest of that is time off with that. And she's not eligible for F M L A.
Right.
No, but.
But, okay, so if you, Karen and I will get together and try to come up with.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, Judge Stevens. We skipped over what? Oh, Lori, do you wanna, so I was going back to. Lori, would you like to come up?
Morning. I also have a situation.
Oh, thank you.
So whatever you'd like to come up first, this is a significant situation that occurred.
Can we do the easy things first? This is like, oh my gosh.
Whatever you'd like to talk about first.
Yes.
You spoke about this last, last meeting, yeah.
And it's been finalized, it took us two weeks of work. As far as finalized, I have a count, there's still no awareness as to why it happened, and the software company has put in several hours, as well as myself and the trainer and programs, and no other county experienced this, and at this time, there's no answer as to why.
So are they sending these back out at no cost to us? Sorry, are they gonna send this out, back out at no cost to us?
That would be, that would be something at your discretion, and it would probably, I mean, to ask for Bryce's help on that. I have not sent them to the third-party vendor, because I always like to make the board aware of the statute, they have to go out. That's just how it goes, and me. That's just how it goes. And me next year. I've attached the invoices. I'm thinking it would be approximately around two thousand dollars, but I may be under or overestimating that. It was very unfortunate and it set my feedback by at least two weeks.
Is Devonet required by the state?
Required by the state for what?
Like, I'll can't do all counties and the state use Devonet?
No.
We we had that choice a couple of years ago.
Larger, the reason why the conversion happened is ABS, the prior software for the smaller counties. Clark and Washoe have always had different vendors and they've been through different conversions over the years. ABS, their owners retires and so or five assessors tropical across the United States, Shela and interviewed various cities and counties for different vendors. And Devonet was the choice of the Nevada Assessors Association excluding the larger. Some assessors have divorced Devonet. And they are still not converted and they are not live. And there are how many of us? Seven or eight of those are still with Devonet. And I can't speak for this. So there's seven or eight. I don't have it in my head right now, but several did. I call it divorced Devonet.
Because of issues like this?
I have no idea. I was not involved and it's private. There was contracts, there was DA's involved. I mean, I am not person personally professionally that would ever ask to number a sense of that. They're my professional friends and it's not my business. I would not know.
My thing is, is Devonet the best one if if there's having issues like this that aren't resolved?
I don't feel like of the treacherous that changing vendors at that point would be a reversion.
And plus you're working through glitches. Oh.
I don't want to change vendors.
I don't think that. I will, I will say this and I and I don't know if Bryce remembers me saying this, but during my campaign, it was my advice that it would not be a good choice to change because you will set this county back the minimum number of five years. And even if I had one or not one, it would not have been a good choice to change at that time.
Well, they've worked through so many glitches at this point that we're actually coming out ahead. I mean, as you work through.
You would have had those same growing pains with any vendor and I have an election starting in two months. I I mean, we can't. I I couldn't do it.
I I can tell you this, that our trainer has spent extra hours that she's not been faithful to try and give me an answer. I'm not the type of person that screams or yells. I have assessive friends that do that. I did say to Bryce and me, need his help. If you well feel that you shouldn't be paying for this, but she is not not telling me.
I don't think the attention that we get from Devonet, we would get from other vendors. They they're here. They opened an office in the state. I don't think we would have thought that since.
And she is still healing from a very traumatic injury and she drove here and spent all day Friday with me. And I provided an example after example of, for example, and I can show the the date range of when it happened, but nobody can find on the back end why it only happened to Alka County. You know, that it it's it's a it's a glitch and and they're still digging. You know, if if any of you want to have conversations with the owners, that's your choice.
But I don't think it's the commissioner's responsibility to have the question, to have the conversation with Devonet.
It's not.
It's the assessor's responsibility.
Well, I had two weeks.
I know. So what I'm saying is, so we contracted with Devonet for them to provide this service to the county. And I know that it seems like they're going extra mile, but they have a financial incentive to do so. And we like to have good relations with our vendors, of course we do. But when we pay for a service and the service we pay for isn't delivered, that's not the county's responsibility to pay for the service again. Devonet should make this right. They should make us whole. It shouldn't come out of the county's expense.
I agree.
So how how would you like to proceed with that?
You approach Devonet and you tell them that you expect them to make us whole, to pay for it.
And 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 I don't have a problem doing that. I do think that it will unfortunately be blamed on the trainer and it will damage relations. So that will impact my team significantly. And that's just the style of the company, which is not your problem, but I I don't want to risk damaging my relationship.
Well, I don't think it would be on your trainer if they can't figure why it just happened to one county. It is something in their system that they need to need fixed. I mean, it's costing you more hours. It's costing the county more money than it should. I think it it is on Devonet that the county shouldn't be and paying this extra. It's not, I mean, how does that affect your budget? So I think that this is a conversation that needs to be had, Devonet, and if you need Bryce's help with that, then help you write the letter or whatever.
I can email the vice president with today's feedback from the board indicating that the financial end of it is a concern. And it is, it is for me too, because I have spent countless hours with her and other members of the team trying to resolve it and
I don't see.
I'm not a programmer. I I I can't have an answer.
It shouldn't come down on your trainer either because she's the trainer. She's not a in charge of the net, the.
Their software.
Software.
So looking at this, so then do you have to come back to the board with a list of the corrections so that we can?
I have the PDF if you'd like to.
It just says the Board of County Commissioners shall thereupon examine the error errors or whatever and it says by an order entered in the minutes of the board authorize and direct the county treasurer to correct the error errors. So those those are our role corrections.
Those will not be taxable corrections. Those will be assessed by notices with the word amended or corrected while on.
Yes, but my question is. Yeah.
So the tax rolls don't need to be corrected, just the.
Maybe or maybe not. I'm going to reach out to the Department of Taxation to ask them if they'd like me to regenerate the super taxable and repost it since there were so many errors, Bryce, but that is not an expense. That's a matter of me rerunning it in the program and asking Justin to put it online.
Well, and there's no question that has to be done and the taxpayers have to be notified. So we've got to get that done. But in the meantime, we need to let Devonet know that we consider it their responsibility and then they can respond however and say, no, we feel it isn't because of this, this, this. And then we can go forward.
And that's why I haven't sent them off to the vendor because I wanted to have open communication. It's a very unfortunate situation.
Lori, whatever help you need, just let me know.
I'm I'm I may just as I asked you CC, when I emailed the vice president, that's who I'm starting with because it's it's just, it's a software thing and and when the trainer says that they have dug in for two weeks and the examples I provided blew their mind, they they've still not, they still not, they're not able to narrow in. I gave them screenshot after screenshot. I can see when it happened, but I cannot tell why it happened. The the work that we do is called mass generation, rolling attacks. It's very common work in the campus system, which I am learning. So it's just unknown as to why it happened. But I will share that that the board has recommended that I reach out to them for reimbursement of these corrected notices. As far as the third party vendor.
Sounds. Are there are salary resolutions for Jay Hill and Inroot? Discussion and possible action.
So if you're ready.
I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to, what? You said, okay. I will make a motion to approve the two salary resolutions, one for Jennifer Hill from a twenty-six five to a twenty-six seven effective January third, twenty twenty-two. And one for Morgan Root going from a twenty-nine five to a twenty-nine seven, also effective January third, twenty-one, two.
And I'll second that one.
I have a motion in second. All in favor?
I.
So Karen, I appreciate that and Karen, I need to. These two ladies are working so hard and.
They are.
They're doing an awesome job.
And learning this new software and I, you know, unfortunately am a little bit late in my business, but when my other ladies left, we were all just learning. So then picking up respective pieces of it has helped me a lot. So thank you for that. And I will go email Devonet. And my CC, so thank you for that.
If you want me to look at it before, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, I can do a draft and send it to you. I appreciate that.
It's not necessary. It's up to you.
Yeah, and and I don't have a problem with your feedback, but I'm with Lacy. The 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 service that we get from Roxanne is something we will not get from another trainer or vendor. And we will be, if for some reason we were to say we want out, we will, our county will be so delayed that.
I don't see where.
It would not, it would not benefit our county, whether I'm your assessor or not, you will hit your county in the rears by years, a minimum of three to five is what is happening.
It would be a nightmare.
Yes.
Just that. To switch. Maybe move that.
And the cleanup she has helped us do has been significant. This was just, it was just a tragedy.
Things happen.
Yeah, hopefully we get it resolved.
Well, it's resolved and they're corrected. They just need to be paid for. So I will look into that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um.
Yeah, lost.
Karen lost. I have James at ten o'clock. Buildings and grounds or building planning. Ten o'clock, James. Good morning.
I don't really have too much report. I did get a an email from from Far West. He's doing the the hy- hydrological evaluation for Grass Valley. He should have the the draft very soon. I said, took a little bit of time getting through to the state and state water engineer, but hopefully perhaps draft in the next week or two. Hopefully we get some rights and respect to that. I will did. Did you want to, Bryce did want to say anything? Stand texting or no?
So it it looks like Far West Engineering has presented some documents pretending to the inland water project. Essentially, these documents are I guess are in several parts. One is a preliminary engineering report that Far West needs to draft the first study and then draft. And that will be used as my as a we project, either through the state revolving funds DA, and that's kind of preliminary to requiring the funding. And then once we acquire the funding, it's hoped that cost of that preliminary engineering report would be so be forward with the inland water project. And it's that may arise in my system. They don't exist yet. It's more preventative.
Correct.
So I I think that the county is probably in a good position to do that. Far West has always done a good job before.
So where are we going to pay for the hundred and nine thousand?
I am not the budget person.
I mean, inland water doesn't have the money in theirs, I would guess.
We no, we we don't have the the hundred and nine thousand. I was thinking if there there hasn't been money, any money allotted to inland water system from the American Rescue Plan, so maybe some of that money could be used for this preliminary engineering. Bryce is absolutely right. Without without this, we're out.
Right.
Rain, any comments on?
I, I don't worry.
So the American Rescue Plan, do we have the hundred nine in that left?
At this point, no.
If unless we don't do the fire. Let's take.
That's why I said, that's why I said at this point.
Yeah. Take at this point, take the firehouse off the west and put the money towards inland.
I have to have that discussion with the fire chiefs.
And bear in mind that this this money is going to be rolled into the funding, so it's going to come back eventually. So that money is going to be replaced. But I think it's probably fair for Commissioner Ratley to ask for that consideration so that the fire chiefs don't like to run people.
No, and that's, I I get. I I was hoping that there would have been at least some.
Yeah.
Set aside for inland water.
But this isn't a matter of if, but when. And we need to address this.
So do we need to put it back on the agenda after you have the discussion with?
Yeah, I don't know when.
Or.
I don't know. I'd write off the top of my head right now when the next fire chief's meeting is. We have one. I don't know. I'd have to look.
So we approve this now and?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Because we've waited this long on the addition of the firehouse and we can wait a little bit longer. But this I to me.
We're not going to be spending that money regardless right now.
No.
Like I said in our, I guess the last meeting, Bryce and I have been working on the bid documents and of course those have not been released.
So if you want, are you ready for a motion? I'll make a motion that we go forward with the professional services agreement and pay the amount of a hundred and nine thousand six forty-two to Far West Engineering from the American Rescue for funds. And then relook at some of the other priorities that we had listed further down. And hopefully this will be reimbursed to us from other funding sources later on.
The second. I'm second.
Oh, your second? Okay.
I have a motion in second. All in favor?
I.
I.
No. I think it's with with approving money spent out of a fund you've already allocated, we have to work on that first before you should be approving money out of it. That's my reason for the no.
Okay, thank you.
There's two days and one name motion. There's two days and one day motion passes. And I think that. We need to address the Emily Water System before. It's too late. Um, anything else, Jane?
So I, I, I'm okay to email Far West and tell him to go for.
Yep.
Um, we also actually, oh, no, my surprise is approved for that. So. Unless you guys have anything else to me, I don't have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We lost our judge.
Yeah, we lost the judge. We're still waiting for Steve. Oh, he's in quote two. Okay. Um. Sheriff.
It wasn't you.
You're not allergic to me? Let's get it. I'm gonna live an inmate's in custody right now. I do have an employee out because I tested positive for COVID. And I had a dispatcher turn in her two week, two week resignation. Um, no part time dispatcher is willing to move them full time. So I won't put it in too much of a word, but. Last weekend I did have two that were sick, two that I routed counsel myself and dispatching advisor covered dispatch for a couple of days. So. But that's about what we're, we're at right now.
Yeah. Tell me about the rapid test. You, you got these kits, is that what it is? And then one of your employees does the, the test?
Yes, on the inmates that come in news.
And then what was the twenty four dollars was to buy those kits?
Yeah, the kids, that's what they cost for us to purchase those.
Yeah.
We had a, we had a continuing issue in the jail there for a while. So. We implemented a policy booking policy that any outside agency would have to take their inmates to the hospital, have them tested prior to booking. Uh, we've only had. I believe one that tested positive that had to be cited and released on a warrant that they had. That was. That went to the court processes. Um, the rest of them, if there are arrests, then we'll do that. Then the house, the police department bought the case of the test. So if the PD arrests somebody, we'll use their tests as well. And then of course purchase some for those that will come in and do weekend check ins or time on their sentences on their days off, those kind of things. So. All inmates are getting tested prior to being booked in a facility to not. Spread that throughout the field in such confined space.
So what happens if they test positive? And they've been arrested?
We do our best to either see if we can cite them and release them, give them a court date, or. Um, if that's not possible, if it's a felony crime or something, we can't release them on it. Try to make movements around to segregate them and just enhance our cleaning and sanitation in that cell. Controlled movements.
You don't release them like California does.
We are best not to. Sometimes that's the only possibility, but we don't. For the higher level crimes, any misdemeanors would be. Subject to that, but once that goes through the court processes, we still gotta go through due process. So. That was basically all I had for an update. That's even his questions.
And Sergeant Stevens retired and you had a party.
Yes, we did. He retired back in September. And he told me on two occasions, he didn't want to party. Deputy Association threw a party anyway. So it was nice. It was nice.
I only went in just to wish him well. I didn't stay.
Yeah.
It was short notice.
But he's a, he's gonna be very busy now. He's got two brand new puppies. Keep his, him and his wife's attention for a while. And keep him busy.
That's awesome. Okay, you have, um.
The last one on there was before you go, the one it says Sergeant Rogers going to there. It's supposed to be Cat Rogers. Um, but that has been canceled. That training has been canceled due to COVID issues.
Well, I was wondering how Sergeant Rogers was going to be in two places at once.
You know, he's a pretty crafty guy, but yeah, not that.
So the dares, dare has been canceled?
Yeah, the, the soonest we can get somebody that is July. So we'll go through the training process and through budgets and stuff. We'll plan for that come July.
Okay, so. Um, we also have the purchase of the two thousand thirteen Ford F one fifty and a. F three fifty animal control trucks.
I like those prices.
For two, two hundred and fifty dollars each, a total of five hundred dollars. That's a great price.
Yeah, these are the trucks. When they first build them out, I talked to, so David Johnson is the gentleman that runs them. When they first spec them out, they're eighty five thousand dollars.
Oh, my gosh.
The, uh, the beds of the trucks for the animals where the animals go, they're heated and air conditioned, they're temperature controlled. They're leaving all of that equipment on there. The only thing they're pulling out is the radio because they use a different radio system than we do.
Is that Reno or something?
No, this is Vegas. So we'd have to travel to Vegas to get it, but at two hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Eighty five thousand dollars each of equipment.
What time tomorrow do you leave?
If we do go, it's gonna be early. We'll just make it a day trip and just take a couple of people with me and go down there.
I was gonna ask if they have three.
Actually, they have four. So if you want another one, I could get a hold of them. He told me I could have first, uh, first crack at two of them since we've been working on this for about two and a half years now. Trying to get these vehicles. Um, and I also talked to, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, I talked to the mayor. Um, I didn't talk to the mayor before I put it on the agenda. Uh, but he said he's willing to, to spring for one of the trucks as well. So if the county wants to split costs with the city, since it is a joint venture over there, they're willing to do that.
Good idea.
So they will actually be stationed at the animal shelter for those individuals to use.
Yes, they're one, they're one ton diesel trucks, um, they're four wheel drive. Um, they have, uh, from what David explained to me in the rear compartments, um, there's even winches that will help pull those into. The compartments. So as those larger animals, they don't, you don't have to lift the crates and stuff.
Wow, that's great.
Save wear and tear on your back and shoulders. So.
So do we need another one out in Grass Valley and Emily area?
I, I would figure animal control, they do come out to Grass Valley and Emily. So if that's where they wanted to put out, I was gonna leave that up to them, but. Um, since I had the contact information to the sheriff's office to get them, I just been steamrolling.
Cause usually they just take their, that their vehicle.
Yeah, and then they come out for a call about Emily Grass Valley area for us. So matter of fact, they were just out there a couple of weeks ago. We had a cattle issue out in Grass Valley. So. Wherever they would need them would best fit them. That's, that would be left to them. Once we get the trucks tonight, do what I can to help them, what they do with them is all there. In my opinion.
Yeah. I would move that we approve the purchase of two vehicles or the animal control.
And I think the city could pay half. I mean, that's only fair.
Yeah.
So I would second that motion.
I have a motion and second all in favor.
Aye.
So Carrie.
That's awesome.
That is awesome.
I, I hate to think of it, we should get all four, but just that's really being greedy.
And. Do you have to have a? Approval for.
The travel.
The travel.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Sergeant Rogers and Deputy Perez to go to Utah. For F T O training, January thirtieth to February second.
She's a dispatcher.
Oh, she's sorry. Okay, dispatcher. Sorry.
I second that.
I have a motion and second all in favor.
Aye.
So Carrie. Notification on the agenda, the correct per reach or should it be?
It should be. It should be approval.
Go along with our travel policy.
Yeah, it should be approval.
And I looked at the, I just did a quick look on the personnel notes in the back regarding travel. There was nothing extra that said it'd be approval. Karen put it on there exactly the way I put it in there. I mean, we've already gone through the budgeting process of. Doing tra- uh, training and all that stuff. So I put it on there as that.
Yeah, we, we do have a policy. We're all out of state travel has to be approved. Ahead of time.
The other good thing about those trucks too, that, uh, one has a hundred and eleven thousand, the other one has a hundred and thirteen thousand miles.
Thank you. Morning, Mr. Cochran.
Good morning.
Probably unlimited time, so. To number thirteen. Number twelve. Okay. Number twelve is Wade Robinson, this middle of affidavit petition pursuant to N R S. Five one seven point three nine zero to explore and develop mining claims belonging to Persian County. First APN zero zero dash three five zero dash seven seven and. Zero zero three dash zero seven one dash four six.
Is there others? Yes, I'm here. I hope you can hear me. Can hear you. Okay, perfect. I, I. I appreciate you guys' time. Uh, I, I, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak before you guys and. I'll, uh, I'll keep it short here. I'm not a very good public speaker, so I've got a little written thing here. I'm gonna, I'm gonna read. It's not very long. But, uh. The Nevada N R S, uh, five one seven point three nine zero allows an abandoned patent and mining claim to move from a position. Of an unpaid tax burden to Persian County to the prospects of a viable mining operation with revenue, job opportunities. And increased tax base for Persian County. The patented mining claim before the county commission has a long history of unpaid tax debt. So little is being done with the property, not even the property taxes are being paid right now. Right now Persian County spends more time and energy in trying to collect taxes on the property. Patent and mining claims have such a low tax base. That many of these sit idle and undeveloped. Year after year after year, they are forgotten pieces of property and the opportunity they offer is also forgotten and neglected. With today's mining technology and the changing demand for minerals, what once were considered. Unusable could in today's market be a viable mining operation producing ore jobs, revenue and taxes. I'm working with a mining engineering company out of Reno. And my plan is to assay the, the claims to determine what minerals and metal, metals are available. My family has lived in Nevada for five generations. I know the history and importance of mining to our communities. And to Nevada as a whole. Every mine in Nevada started with one claim and one discovery. I'm, I'm excited about the opportunity. For this claim in Persian County. And for the next discovery. I'm asking you for the opportunity to do this, to change the status quo and to improve the community in the county. Are you familiar with the old saying, keep doing what you're doing, you're gonna get what you got? Let's plan now to do something different and get something different. So if you got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Uh, you know, I'm excited to. Have an opportunity to, you know, to see what's out there on these mining claims and, you know. Maybe, maybe start something.
You have any questions?
Uh-uh, no.
I, I have. So in Nevada, whenever the county acquire, there's a patented mining claim or any. Pay taxes. Uh, there's a, uh, essentially a deed that's issued to us with the clerk and it's considered county property. Somebody such as this gentleman can come before the commissioners and make a petition for permission to go on to that property. For no more than six months and explore the minerals. That person can't take more than five hundred pounds of ore from the site. Um, and at the end of the six months, the petitioner, if he or she so, if they want, they can request or they can execute a deed. And they can pay the value of the illegal taxes to actually get title to that property. And so I've looked at the petition and the petition and affidavit, made all of the statute requirements and my recommendation, the board would be to grant it. And the way that it works is this board orders and grants him permission through the minutes of this meeting to enter onto those two properties that he's petition access for.
So you're ready? Mm-hmm. I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve Wade Robson's affidavit and petition pursuant to N R S. Five one seven point three nine O to explore and develop the mining claims belonging to Persian County A P N zero zero nine. Dash three five O dash seven seven and zero zero three dash oh seven one dash forty six.
I'll second.
I have a motion and second all in favor.
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. You guys have a fantastic day.
You do too.
Yeah.
Okay, now that we have Judge Stevens and. You've got them all together.
Got it, got them together.
And we still have Bryce.
Wow.
We are. Discussing. N R S statute.
What is it?
A B. A B four twenty four, which requires. Something that many, so. Two thoughts. Seven is forty eight.
Initially, it was twenty four.
Yeah.
It's a compromise. Yeah.
Yeah.
Takes the pressure off a little bit. But it still requires.
Friday night arrest.
Come Saturday here.
Unless they have an attorney that.
So really what my, I asked this, we put on the agenda and I talked to Mr. Cochran and Judge Stevens. I just, just so that they could maybe apprise the board of. Some of the issues that they foresee and maybe prime the board because we're coming into budget season. Because there's going to be some requests from probably Mr. Cochran's office, the Justice Board and also the District Attorney's Office. That are a bit out of, out of the norm so that we can address. This legislation.
And if this is. My understanding, supposed to be reimbursed through indigent funds, but we know that probably will not happen.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I think there would be some. I guess. You know, remote infrastructure to appear remotely generally on Sundays, you know, I am out of the area for a few hours. My son to Reno. So certainly. Has telephonic appearances. Stretches northern Nevada that aren't the most conducive to self-service or even possibly. But, uh. I don't, I don't know what in terms of. And just to maybe other way in terms of what the best way to ensure that we're able to forward electronically things like probable cause sheets and pre-trial risk assessments. I know we tried to do one last week and for whatever reason, just the PDFs could. That's just a function of size of the file. Nature of where I was close to. Silver Springs at the time. Doctor, like my gardener. But I, I think that aspect has to be, uh, explored because there's just. Times that I literally. As part of another, you know, matter, I have to bring, uh, my son back to Reno on Sundays. And as well as just what the compensation is in terms of now being on call potentially. Weekend, um, I'd like to, and I, I think it would be prudent to have whether it be Mr. Song, so there's someone conflict wise. Because there's just, the reality is at some point. You've got a lot going on vacation and not necessarily be. Big city a lot of times.
Well, you should be entitled to take your vacation without.
Without having to, to deal with these. Forty eight hour.
I mean, that's all you get. I mean, that's all you get, those vacations. So what we need to do is this effective July one?
July first.
Okay, so in the budget, we need to put that. You're gonna need laptops, you're gonna need.
Well, I have a laptop. I, I think just in terms of what we're doing in terms of signal when I am, you know.
Can we get hotspots?
Yeah, I mean. Between friendly. Sketchy.
My, my reputation with. Laptops. With headsets, like USB headsets give the best. For the first. Listening and speaking. And wireless hotspots.
Okay.
So like Verizon line.
And I use those when I need to, yeah.
Years ago, I had one of those.
And those, those help with the signal, so.
So they'll, they'll work wherever there's.
Okay.
The, the type of, the, the quality of connection is.
Yeah.
Most, most guy at this order, I think at this point needs four. If you're in an area where five G service is available for that.
So will they?
Completely dependent on.
Will they, that help them get their documents that they need?
So for that. My, my reputation is not to try to send you. Because email servers do have file size limits. Those some of those. My suggestion would be to use. Either OneDrive, share, put, put the file in your OneDrive, share it to all of OneDrive. Then that will give them, that will give their assistant already to download the file. And they're not, it's not attached to the keynote. Where you're injected into the file. I'm worried instead of. Use in Microsoft Teams that are like specific to case and then everybody needs. To be involved in that, be invited whether they're inside. Uh, whether they're a Persian County employee or a guest, an external guest, all of them provide them to get access to. So and even if you need to keep this separate, like the toxic path of prosecution side and side. And I will speak to the, the legal lines, but we could just set up separately.
I, I think what we're talking is the exact same documents, probable cause complaint, pre-trial risk assessment. So I don't, I don't think there's anything confidential at that stage that I.
Why my suggestion would be this. And just.
What are you saying? What's it called?
Teams.
Teams.
Okay, sorry.
Jerry, what?
If you want to set up some time to, to be taught how to use teams. Let's, let's get this.
It comes up like a term on.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Yeah. Jerry, did you have something?
Well, I have a good question as to what we're gonna have to do with the jail. So I presume that since they're doing mail hearing, there shouldn't be any custody. So what kind of equipment and that kind of stuff am I gonna have to add to ours? Because we don't have cameras in our computers. We don't have microphones. We don't have any of that. When we do Zoom meetings, we just listen to whoever on the other side and then have to call in all the phone. Is there possibly a video phone for the new system that's coming in or would it be better to, to purchase a camera and a microphone? And if we do that, we'll buy support to test it so that the deputy that's there during the hearing can hear what's going on so that they know what they're gonna do and not just stand waiting. There's a lot of moving parts for my office as well.
So without, without knowing exactly how what software is going to be used to hold these theories. I couldn't make a recommendation for a video phone. So my, my recommendation would be the web and. And. Either, either the whatever, whatever requirements of privacy are needed. To use headphones, which is. The headphones said. And output to multiple one in this one microphone. So it kind of kind of goes down to whether requirements for the, the physical space are. On the jail side.
I presume they're gonna have to do it in the jail office. That's the only place we have to make it to even intend to do something in this nature. So, and we already have a computer in there. We just don't have the peripherals that we needed. And then I would imagine that the defendants would have access to this as well, so. Or the access to the, to the.
Another thing, I, I think. Justice court. Perhaps, but I would have, get some notification that arrests happens. I usually don't. At the status quo, it's a come show up to the initial appearance. I think there'll have to be some notice that, hey, we're gonna be doing this and I don't know. That's just a text message from a personal phone or, or what, but I think.
So I can set that up for my effect. So in our system, anytime we do a booking, we send out to the judge and all of her staff, plus all of my command staff gets a text message so we know that somebody's got. Like that, you would, if the district attorney, like that, you're gonna get all of the new books that we get, so.
I think that makes sense.
Whichever phone number you give me access to, I can send it up.
Yes, starting July first.
And then the court would have to set a hearing, of course.
Yeah.
Just give us a heads up, hey, I'm gonna be working on Sunday.
Don't go too far remote. You know.
Yeah, what I was hoping is to kind of maybe pick a time on Sunday.
A set time.
A set time. So you pretty much do that. If you had it, that's the time it's gonna be held instead of like, oh, well, two o'clock.
Yeah.
Maybe nine o'clock this time and like a set time. Make a little bit easier for us.
That makes sense. That makes good sense.
You might also want to consider some upgrades. To the courts' system to something similar to that. If you're ready to open one of these.
Well, and the DA's office is gonna need stuff too.
Yeah, so I was just waiting for Steve to kind of outline some of the needs of his office.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same thing with, with staff being alerted in terms of. Myers can be. PC complaint. Retrauer's assessment goes through her and into me or if it's just directed to me. Yeah, I, you know, I guess I don't have a too big of a broad overview yet on. Best way to do that.
The way that I kind of advised it happened, happening in the DA's offices that that information would be sent from us. We'd leave staff kind of out of that portion of it, even though day to day they're involved on the weekends, so we could just take care of it. So, you know, similar to Steve, Todd and I are always on call. But we're gonna need assistance from other DA's offices. We're gonna need the contract. Because those DA's offices are coming in, working for Persian County as deputized district attorneys that are going to expect some type of compensation. The same goes for Todd and myself. We're working for Vinor County or Lander County or whatever county we can get to help us. I've talked to other district attorneys who have already kind of worked this out in their office. And they call it a consultation fee, so it doesn't interfere with our salary. I, I can't get anything else because I'm capped.
But you could, if you had to go turn this around and go to.
But I can't.
You couldn't even do that.
No, which is fine. But, but Steve Cochran should get standby. Todd Bang should get standby. Judge Stevens staff should get standby. She can get standby. It's a consultation fee though. It's not additional salary. And it's a standby fee for a certain amount each hour until they're actually working. And then, you know, they can, we can crush numbers and come up with what a fair amount is for the judge to work, an attorney to work. And then any, any staff to work.
So are we going to work with just JPs from other counties and other public defenders to cover so you guys at least get?
Well, I think what Steve was talking about is that we would ask Kyle Swanson, if he was interested in being a standby, Kyle's probably gonna say no. Just, I don't know, just. But there are other attorneys who the, who the county has a good relationship with, defense attorneys. We, you know, we mentioned Kale Brock, mentioned some other names who would probably be interested in getting that standby fee and that an hourly rate for doing. You know, a pretty simple hearing.
Yeah.
Over the weekend. But for sure, there's a statute that comes into effect on July first allows JPs at neighboring jurisdictions to function as JPs. In an Avery County for this particular, for this exact type of scenario. So when Judge Stevens is unavailable, she can get ahold of another justice in the piece who can do this failure or.
And you can do that with other DAs. It's just public defenders that we're having the issue with, correct?
Well, yeah, but there's public effect. There's other defense attorneys who will be interested in doing this. But yeah. I'm sure Steve knows way more than I do. That he can reach out and, you know, Steve will develop his own plan for what works best for him in his office. And the three of us along with the sheriff will get together and we'll come up with a cohesive plan. That runs smoothly, but really, I just wanted the commissioners to be aware that there's gonna be some increases in budgets and there's gonna be some equipment needs.
Yes.
From Steve's office, my office, perhaps a judge's office. There's gonna be increased salaries as well. Yeah.
So we probably need a list of everything, all the equipment that's gonna be needed. To do these remote. Trials.
Do you think we need a, a separate laptop from the one we have to do this?
I would, I would suggest that one that way, if for your, your ultimate, you can say, here's the stuff you need to set up.
Oh. I. Let's say someone's covering on a Sunday, but I'm out of state. I mean, I don't know how I give them a physical laptop. But.
They'll be in another.
They'll be in like Reno. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
See them physically coming here.
I mean, I do.
But, but as long as we make, as long, we're gonna identify who this, who the other public defenders are. And there's gonna be a schedule. And then we just have to give Justin that person's information and make sure they have teams on OneDrive. So these documents can be shared with them.
Yeah, and, and I mean, that, that could be, give you their contact information to cash out. I mean, accesses. If the, if we want to move them to use all the same equipment. Then we could get a Pelican case and ship a Pelican case with the. Or. Or we, we buy multiple setups and each alternate gets a setup that they use. Or they just use their own equipment and they have to write it, which they probably will because they're gonna have to when they see that.
So if they have OneDriver meetings, go to, what is it? OneDriver?
Teams.
Teams. Then that would be the easiest thing and least.
Must are weird that they use Mac. Just kidding.
So basically, everybody's, everybody's got the, the laptop or whatever. They just need the hotspots if they don't. And what makes it basically work for our county right now? We just need the, the equipment in the jail and the hotspots. And everything else that our public defender, our JP and our, our jail need and our district attorney. So we need to get that together for budgets along with figuring out. What is it? A stipend?
Standby, on-call, pay.
And we have to be. Add these two budgets.
And then a reasonable compensation for that hourly rate. Going over the documents, talking to their clients, hearing in court. Doing all that stuff.
Well.
So will this go into each one of your budgets? After you get it to.
I, I think the way that I'm gonna do it is separate. So that when it comes time to report this to the industry defense commission, that it's already set aside in my budget. I know exactly how much that is costing. And it's something that, you know, the four of us will probably have to work together on for equipment and things like that. But yeah, I think it should be presented individually in each office's or department's budget.
Yes.
But separately, so.
Separately for, yeah, so maybe we'll get reimbursed for it.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Maybe. Anything else?
Right now, we are having the, our, our seminar next week and we're gonna go over a lot of this stuff, what the other judges are doing, so. What they're using and go from there.
I do, I definitely like the idea of coming up with a time that.
Yeah.
Ideal, you know, you can bank on Sunday.
Yeah.
You can count, you can predict.
Right. If you have to go in, that's the time you have to go in.
Yeah.
And it, and it's more convenient for everybody involved because the sheriff will know what time, defensive attorney, everybody's on the same page, which. Weekends, that's crazy, but. At least. It's more convenient than just getting a phone call and saying, hey.
Either intent.
Yeah.
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 So because it's gonna be in next year's budget, that's July one. You'll have to be ready to go with ordering everything, but you can't order it. You can't receive it until after July one, so there's gonna be a month or something where you're limping. You know, but after that, then everything should be okay.
For burning down.
Yeah.
Are they having it this year?
They say they are.
Oh, really? Steve. Do you guys have anything else? First.
And then I'll come out at mid-time and let everybody know.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
We skipped Bryce.
We skipped our district attorney and department update report.
I don't have anything to.
We don't have any proclamations and awards. The Grass Valley Advisory Board, come on up. Sorry it took so long.
Hi, Joe Paul. Okay, old chair member of the Grass Valley Advisory Board. Have a very short report. There was no meeting in December. Our January meeting is on thirty-first. In the next day, looks like Silver State Greens will be meeting here as well.
And I'll be at your January meeting.
So who's going to go to the January thirty-first press? Oh, did he? Okay, sorry. I'm, well, I'm further away. What can I say?
Good job.
That's quick.
Did you have another reason to come to town today?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much.
Okay, see you then.
Derby Airport. Um, can I?
Oh, and hangar leases. We wanted to talk about this. Bryce has been, made a couple more adjustments. When I talked last meeting, we talked about the fees involved, the area involved. I got the areas from the assessor's office. And we'll not finalize that and release them. Or lease of maintenance.
So before you go on, at that end up meeting that Heidi and I attended yesterday, Kurt was there from the airport.
I heard.
Oh, you did? Okay.
And I will be talking to Kurt. I know him personally.
Yeah, and, and did he talk to you about there's money to build the hangars?
That's what I'll be.
And build it up and.
Build anger.
Yes, he said to build them.
Would that be nice?
No, really, he did.
I'll talk to him.
Yeah, he said that there is money to build the hangers and, you know, bring up the ground. So yes, please talk to him about that.
I will.
Okay, cause he said it's a, we're in a flood plain, so they have to raise it up. But he indicated that it's a good revenue source for the airport, for the rentals.
And we've already taken steps to raise.
Right.
First area of hangers.
But if there's.
They may have to come up a little bit.
But if there's money to build them, so talk to your buddy.
Yeah.
He says there's lots of money.
Dan told me that last night when I was talking to him. Whoa, that's great. I'll talk to him.
Yeah, and then he said, you know, if we wanna do any upgrades to the terminal or anything, it's lots of money. So.
Their problem is, is, you know, they're, as with everybody, their funding is limited.
And the other thing you said too was some of this money that we're getting from American Rescue. If I understood correctly, he said that can be used as match. Some of the funding he has can be used for match. For different things. So I don't know if FAA match, you know, it could be used for that.
Water match?
No, we can, we can, if anything within the airport itself, yes.
Okay.
But not up to the airport. But yeah, anything water wise. Oh, and he suggested that we put in jet diesel fuel.
And we looked at that and it's not viable for our.
Cause he said.
And the reason for that is you have jet fuel there ready. I mean, it's a couple reasons. One is jet fuel deteriorates faster than gasoline. And it just sits there and then you have silver springs ran into that. They, they did a bunch of money, bought a truck and all that. And they finally had to sell it and get it.
Anyway, he, I didn't ask him these things. He just started talking about all this different stuffs.
Yeah, so the, the second part of that is, you know, you get a, a commercial generic charter jet comes in here for fuel. That pilot's not gonna pump us up fuel. We don't have anybody there.
You can't even, you have to fill your own car.
Yeah.
Item number nine, seven trucks distilling lease agreement for the windmill building. Approval of the lease agreement between Pershing County and Seven Trucks Distilling. LLC for the rental of the windmill property located nine twenty five Cornell and nine Dartmouth Avenue. Beginning January first, twenty twenty two and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty two for a period of six months at a rate of sixteen hundred dollars a month. This agreement changes the previously agreed commencement date of the lease from September first to January first. Uh, March.
I gave the wrong day.
Oh, instead of September.
No, instead of.
Instead of January?
So originally this lease agreement with the, for the windmill property with seven trucks distilling was supposed to commence September first. I wish time to decide whether he wanted to purchase that building or not for the county. It's my understanding that the owner of Seven Trucks Distilling had an accident, a car accident. And was out of commission for a while. I've been in contact with him pretty much all of December, November. He was able to finally execute the lease and he suggested a new commencement date, January first to July first.
July first. Or June thirtieth.
June thirtieth.
Do I have a motion? I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that motion.
I have a motion, second all in favor.
I.
So moved. Do we have a litigation meeting?
No.
Report from legal counsel, board appointments. Oh, oh. Board appointments, resignations, library board, trustees, planning board, wildlife board, volunteer board, cemetery board. Nine one one, weed district. So, so for the cemetery board, we have four. We have Glenn Rose, Dale Telcott, Winston or Buzz Gray. Those three people are returning and Julie Amade would be a new member and I would make the motion to approve all of them.
Then I'll second that motion.
I have a motion, second all in favor.
I.
So moved. And I think that was it. Yeah, which one? Oh, the weed district. Oh, okay, sorry. So I'll make a motion to reappoint Mike Gibson to the level, Love Lot Valley Weed District, sorry.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second all in favor.
I.
Isn't that's it, right? Okay. Now report from legal counsel.
I, I do have a small matter. I was in contact with representatives from Stan Tech. Last week, they agreed to release us from our contract with them for the Persian County Master Planner Day and events to the Persian County Code. Uh, so they agreed to let us out of the agreement. We're gonna return the balance of any unused funds on that contract. And Cynthia Albright sent me a new contract for, so that she can do work on the master plan amendment in the Persian County Code. And I think that James has been in contact with me and they've worked out a fair contract price for those services. And the board has previously authorized me to go forward with that. So I have a contract and I'll give it to Karen so that.
Report from administrative system. Items for future agendas. I asked if this be put on the agenda as far as setting some dates for some planning workshops. I think that we need to sit down and talk about some things before the budget. And then also, we need to have a pre-budget meeting with the city. And so I was just thinking, we need to have some dates and Sherry, Sherry, Cheryl, Sharon. W N D D, Cheryl, Cheryl has offered to help facilitate if we need that. There's a lot that's gonna be happening very quickly with Salmon, the farm. And we need to look at maybe some of our positions and making some changes. I mean, I have thoughts. I think other people do too, but we need to be able to sit down and, and just talk about it and, and come to a consensus of where, what we need to do to make this a successful thing. Also, my understanding is that we're going to be receiving a lot of revenue because of the salmon farm. And there's things that we haven't been doing and that we could talk about, like future projects and put some priorities to them as that funding comes available. And I think Jen, is it Morrison, can help us with an idea of what we're looking at. Even with the state, if they get approval for the state rebates or incentives, we're still talking about quite a bit of funding and it's also going to impact the city.
Isn't that kind of the horse before the cart?
I think that. We need to be prepared. And I'm saying if we need to, we can sit down and say, these are the things that we need and some things that we need. Like for instance, we need a planner and we need that planner now. And I mean, granted, we will put them in the budget for next year, but. Re, or post that proactive instead of reactive, which we are always trying to catch up. We aren't in front of it and we need to be there. And the planner, we really need a planner because we've always had a planner and. And that went to the wayside years.
Yes, and it, it, we need to hire one back because it's not benefiting the county.
And if, and if it means doing some reorganization, then that's, I think, we need to talk about it. And we need to come up with some, you know, what we, as, as commissioners. And then there's other things too that we put off that we can stay, okay, when the funding comes in, this is our first priority. You know, it's like law enforcement. It's like the water thing. If there's enough money gonna be coming in, we can pursue those projects fairly quickly and be shovel ready in a sense.
Correct, and that's one thing that, that, what was the, the call that we just, did you guys?
Oh, lady. Yeah, the.
I mean.
Whatever that group was.
Yeah, the Colorado group.
And, and that, that was enlightening for me because it's like, we really aren't ready.
Is there enough work for a full time planner?
It, it, that's why I'm saying there might be reorganization.
Or could you look at contracting?
That's what I would say.
To have them.
And it's. But those are things we need to talk about.
But is.
And what's best.
We need, we need to have a planner because if we, I know James, James is trying to do the job, but he's not an expert in it. And if we have all this growth, we have to have a plan for it, which right now we just have. Here and there, or plan that was, the last planner we had was Michael Johnson and
it's been a while. I'm just thinking that we need to be able to sit down and, and talk about it. Larry has thoughts, you have thoughts, I have thoughts and we can put, and the, the other departments too, they have input to different things. But we need to sit down and say, okay, where are we going from here? Instead of waiting and saying, oh, until they catch us off guard. Well, I mean, yeah.
So does anybody?
I mean, I.
Dates for these.
Well, you're gonna be gone when to when? February.
My conference is February first through third.
Okay, so do you wanna do it after the conference? To do it before the conference that we're pushing, getting postings done and stuff?
Yeah.
So after. Anytime.
I'm, I'm open pretty much. I just need somebody to.
The second, the seventh through the twelfth is not a good week. Anytime after that.
The seventh is not a good week.
The second.
That's not a good week.
So the week of the fourteenth. I'm open on Monday.
I'm open Monday, Wednesday.
Well, Wednesday's commissioner show.
Monday, that's Valentine's Day.
It's too long of a day for me. My brain's done.
And I. On the sixteenth, we also have a, a health department meeting on that afternoon.
Yeah, so I'm open on the Monday or the Thursday totally.
I, I'm open on Thursday and Friday, but not Monday.
So Thursday's the better day and I'm open for Friday too, but you're probably not. Are you?
So do it on the, have a meeting on the seventeenth.
Um, I have a six hour appointment scheduled.
From seventeen.
Almost seventeen.
So let's look at the week of the twenty first.
There's President's Day. It's a holiday. We come in. No, I wouldn't do that to you. I'm open on the Tuesday.
I could do the Tuesday. And by the way, the twenty fifth of that one, I have a chief's meetings.
Tuesday.
The twenty second. Well, are you open on the fifteenth?
I can move that appointment.
On the what?
On the fifteenth, February fifteenth, I can move the one appointment.
I already have a nine o'clock.
Would that, would you be available after that or I don't know when you're?
Yeah, if it's an afternoon.
Oh.
I can do Friday, the eighteenth. I just would, I have one appointment I had, I would have to move.
Yeah, I'm open on Friday, the eighteenth.
So you're looking at, oh, the seventeenth was out, right?
Yeah.
So the eighteenth?
Yeah.
And, and the twenty second or just the eighteen? You talked about the twenty second.
The twenty second doesn't work for me. The eighteenth is easier to move the, the appointments.
So you wanna do it on the eighteen?
Yeah.
And then, um, do you wanna do it like nine o'clock in the morning? Is that work?
Yeah.
And then we can ask Heidi, nine o'clock, sorry. And we can ask Heidi if she can get a hold of Cheryl. And then we'll need to put an agenda together, but it can be, you know, plan, goal, goal setting and planning and.
Schedule that one meeting or do you mean schedule one for the city? We tried to do it before there.
So what are you looking at? I'm sorry. What dates were you saying?
Their meetings are the first and the fifteenth.
Right.
And we usually do it at six or something before there.
What time is their meeting start? So we usually do it at six o'clock, but so we're looking at the fifteenth. Is that what you're?
The fifteenth with the city?
I think that's what they're saying. I think that's what they're saying. So are you saying the fifteenth?
Yeah, let's shoot for the fifteen.
So if I block out the fifteenth through the whatever, eighteenth or something, fifteenth, sixteenth and seventeenth, is that what you said?
So the half day would be on Wednesday, the sixteenth.
Okay.
So all day on the fifteenth, half day on the sixteenth and the seventeenth.
Do we need fifteenth, sixteenth and seventeenth? We don't need the eighteenth at all?
Not usually, Carol, because if I have a bunch of changes to make, we would meet again later.
Okay. Okay. That's great.
Thank you very much.
I know the Bible.
Yeah. Correspondence. Matters of the board for this discussion. Now Larry Larry read the update from Sean. Emergency manager, then update. Oh, this is relating to COVID, oh, and mending projects and allocation for the American Rescue Plan. And the amount of one three hundred and six thousand five hundred and fifty two dollars.
We have one more billing from far west that we processed. For their the water line.
For discussion, order reports.
You want me to go first? Okay, um, as I mentioned before, Heidi and I attended the NDOT meeting yesterday. And they have their priority list, the G twenty nine bridge is supposed to be done next year, next fiscal year. And of course, that's a priority, but we also told them that now we have a priority with this cause grave area. And so we will get back to them, they're supposed to email us this, which once we get it, I'll have Karen. Send it to all of you as well, and we just talked about a few other things. I'll put back on the list about the pedestrian lights.
And they did save the money for the the Woolsey Bridge is in the budget.
Yes, they did, we'll see.
We'll see.
We'll see, and. They talked about grant, there's a lot of money for transportation coming down. They're going to have some Zoom meetings, which Dan Hill was here and I asked him if Trevor could participate. And I'll have to do with, you know, how you access some of these grants. Cause I brought up about the Grass Valley Road needing repaving and some of that. There's beautification grants, so I think that if we can get some of this money, we can do some of these projects. But it's gonna take some work.
I think if they if they actually went to the point of funding some money for Grass Valley Road. Then we should be pressing them to take that over as a state road, not a county road.
I agree. Because it pretty much turns into a state road. Anything else, Carol?
No, thank you.
I have one thing. And I'm gonna have this discussion with Reen in the next day or so. How can we purchase a snowcat for going up that hill? As when something happens, it's always when the snow is in there and you can't get there. Anyway, I've been looking at used ones, see what we can do and and I will continue to do that.
What what do they range about?
You know, I I saw one for eighteen thousand dollars, but the engine needs to be replaced. You know, probably most of them were in the thirty thousand dollar. And then there's another idea, instead of doing the snowcat like you would see. You know, going in a ski resort, instead of doing that, do like the side by side on tracks.
Yeah, and you know.
We're gonna look at it.
That could also be looked at though as an emergency vehicle.
A snowcat can be used for a couple of different reasons, yes.
Not just that particular.
I mean, not a snowcat, but a side by side.
But we have the op, I know options tax doesn't have many, you know, but technically we have options tax for safety and.
That's why I'm gonna go talk with me. Yeah, you know, I hadn't even thought about option.
You're welcome.
Anyway, I'm I'm looking into it just to see uh what we can do and what's the best way to do it.
The only thing I have is is the rec board approved movie partner with the. Pool repairs and including the a new slide. In the amount of two hundred and eighty four thousand dollars.
A slide cost that?
No, that's the pool repair and the slide together.
So when are they gonna start the repairs?
As soon as. Sean can get the material needed to use. Pool that's on a ship.
It's sitting out in the ocean.
So if it's two eighty four, we got.
And then wasn't there, how much was collected from?
Forty five thousand dollars.
So it's a good portion of it that's already spoken for funded.
Yeah, and the slide will have. Stairs instead of steps. Does that make sense? It's not a ladder, it's actually stairs. And it has to be, they have to to chip out the concrete, run a water line to. The board decided not to. Um, move forward with anything on the high dive, so the high dive is going away permanently. But it it was also a pool pack issue.
The school didn't want to.
Oh yeah, they, everybody wanted it, but it's it's getting to the point where pretty soon full pack. So it's going way completely, they're going to. Is it board for the low dive, something like that, board and springs for the low dive. The, what is it, diving board? So so we won't have the high dive anymore, just the diving board and slide.
I it scares me.
And that's all I have for.
Do you want to do the jail inspection, the second commission meeting of February?
The one we have scheduled for today.
No, not the second, the second meeting in February, so the sixteenth.
Jail inspection that morning at seven thirty.
If that's okay. They don't usually take too long. By the end of that day.
Public input. No action may be taken on a Friday, the matter raised under this item. Place specifically on the. Until the matters itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Public comments limited to three minutes, if there are any public comment. This meeting's in recess.
Good job, Shana.